We begin our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, so I'm going to ask Jeremy Olson this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united by indivisible, equal, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. There's only one item on the agenda this evening, other than the regular consent agenda, but if you would like to address the commission, there are slips over on the side table that we request you fill out unless you are the applicant, then you don't need to fill out a slip. That goes for items on the agenda or not on the agenda. So first item on the agenda is actually presentations on public matters, not on the agenda, of which I have no request to speak. So moving on to correspondence and staff communications, David?
Yes, thank you very much. A few items to note for the council, excuse me, the commission tonight. City council has met twice since our last meeting, however, they have not taken up any items, land use and zoning matters lately.
Oh, David, David, is your mic on?
My light is on. Secondly, I did want to note for the planning commission, we had expected to have another minor item on the planning commission agenda tonight related to the Indian Heritage Center Conditional Use Permit that your council, your commission saw last year, last fall. Fortunately, the applicant for that project, Mr. Patel, has recently passed away, so we do not bring that item forth to the planning commission at this time and will have considered it by the zoning administrator, but I did want to report that to the commission this evening. And also, Ryan, the commission, that we are scheduled right now to have our next meeting in two weeks on the 19th, so we do expect to have that meeting. That concludes our staff correspondence at this time.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is disclosure of ex parte communications. At this time, planning commissioners should disclose communications with any of the applicants for items on the agenda. Ms. Sandy?
I actually haven't spoken with an applicant, but I received communications from a resident with their thoughts about the project and the look of the cell tower.
Mr. Chairman, I have also had contact with about three of the neighbors in the area on this project.
Okay, Mr. Chase?
I'm trying to remember, and I believe I received some email information from the applicant a while back, and I'm a little confused as to whether it was the last time around or this time, but I just want to put it out there just in case.
In all fairness, I believe I received an email communication the first time. This came before us, but that's about it. I was unable to respond. So moving on to consent agenda, the only item on the consent agenda is the minutes from the March 1st meeting. Looking for a motion if there's no discussion?
I'd make a motion that we approve the minutes of March the 2nd.
Moved by Commissioner Moore?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Chase. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing none. Are there any abstentions from the March 1st meeting? No, okay. Moving on to the regular agenda, public hearing regarding Vista Towers, CUP 10-12, design approval. Mr. Tilly?
Yes, thank you very much. I do have a PowerPoint on this item for the commission this evening. And so as we'll get going, just as the commission will recall, this item has been before your commission several times last year, and ultimately, when it was approved in December of 2011, commission voted to include a condition to require the applicant to return to the commission with alternative designs to consider along with the previously proposed monopine and have that available as part of the discussion, and the commission would approve the final design of the project. But the commission did approve the use permit back in December this past year. Just quickly, a little bit of history, we have been working on this project for some time now. It actually came in in fall 2010, and we had several meetings on the project. We first started with a community meeting at the high school back in February of last year. We did a workshop before the planning commission in April, and then we've been to the planning commission in hearing format in June. Also, we're scheduled for a notice for a hearing in November, and then we had the ultimate hearing in December where the project was approved. And all these meetings, including the community meeting, have been publicly noticed at a quarter-mile radius, which has included approximately 300 properties. Quickly, just to review the site, if we could go to slide three, please. One more, please. Thank you. We went one, two. I don't have them in that order. But we, so quickly, you know, the site is at 3200 Jefferson Boulevard, which is just south of South Linden Boulevard in Southport. It's adjacent to the Tower Mart, just south of it. This is the Vickers Concrete Sowing Property, and originally, the site had been proposed at the rear, one of the rear corners of property, and at the suggestion of the planning commission, was relocated more toward the center of the property on the south side, making it somewhat further away from the residential areas that are to the west. Tonight, we have three design options for your consideration. These are ones that you have seen previously, although some of the photo simulations have been refined, you know, since we were last here. They are the monopine, which is what the applicant had proposed originally. There's also a windmill design and a water tank. Each would be similar in height, host the same number of carriers, and a similar location on the property. There is some slight variation, but all comparable. And just for our, you know, to set up how we have reviewed, you know, the design options, we're kind of operating under the kind of two basic, you know, premises that regardless of which design option is selected, you know, the facility at this height, and given the surrounding environment, would be visible for multiple vantage points. And also that, you know, viewers of the facility may very well recognize it as a wireless facility regardless of each design option. And so kind of operating on those, that premise, that if we're talking about a facility that, you know, would be visible, then what really is the best design application for that area given that information? So I'm going to show you three simulations for each design option. These were provided by the applicant. They provided some updated ones, so that they're all from the same vantage points, but they are the same structures that you have in the simulations that were provided in your packet. And so we'll, and then each three added vantage points, and then we'll look at each one, and some notes on each design, and at the end, we'll circle back and, you know, conclude. So we'll start with the monopine. This is a view looking southbound on, from Jefferson, and on the top of the top image is, you know, what you see, and then on the bottom image is, shows the monopine. It's visible over the Tower Mart gas canopy from this vantage point. And also, of course, you note in the context of the area, there's overhead power lines, you know, streetlights, you know, and other information, but also, you know, fairly low-rise, you know, buildings in this area. The next vantage point is from Allen Avenue, which is generally to the west, northwest, northwest of the site. The land in the foreground is rural residential property that's currently undeveloped, and those are one-acre properties. And you can see the monopine in the lower image, you know, beyond the existing trees that are along the, in the Vickers property, and you can also see the Tower Mart building and other existing, you know, pine trees. Third view now, we're looking northbound on Jefferson, so we're south of the site, and in the lower image, you can see the monopine, you know, off to the left, you know, behind the road and where you have existing trees, you know, the overhead power lines, et cetera. So for the monopine, just some notes, this is the original design that was proposed by the applicant, and as I understand, this does remain the applicant's preferred design, although he is open to the other proposals as well. The antennas are actually located within the branches. They could be painted and placed in socks, so that they are largely obscured. We expect a much higher branch density and overall quality than the existing monopine that's at the end of Linden Road that was built circa 2000. Design of these facilities has come a long way, you know, since that time. There are existing plus or minus 40-foot pine trees that are along the north property line. Those were likely planted with the Tower Mart development in the late 90s, I think circa 1998, I believe, when that was built. Talking with the city's arborist today, you know, and her just off-the-cuff opinion did expect those could probably grow and get up to about 50 feet, but probably wouldn't grow much more than that. Again, for our recommendations tonight, we do not favor this particular design and this location, largely because the surrounding context is, does not provide a way for this particular facility to largely blend in, which is generally how these applications are done, and at least was the intent for the one at the end of Linden where there are several large trees in that area that are of comparable scale. So now, we move on to the windmill concept. This is actually was one concept that I suggested based on our past experience with the windmill project at South River Road. I felt that design was well-executed, although recognizing that the context for that site, which is the old sewer treatment plant, really certainly isn't analogous to what we have here at this location. Again, we have the same view. Now, we're back looking southbound on Jefferson. You can see the windmill above the, protruding above the gas station canopy. They're actually, the first set of antennas would actually be on the fan of the windmill itself, and then the others would be on the lattice tower beneath. So in this case, the antennas themselves, you know, which we mounted on the lattice, you know, would be visible, which does contrast it from the monopine where the panel antennas themselves would be, actually be obscured within the branches of the tree. Then another view now, where again, we're looking generally east from the Allen Avenue. The windmill and the lattice are clearly visible at this location, and one of the, I think one of the pros to this particular design, and one of the reasons why I suggested that it be part of the consideration, is that the lattice, as you can see from this, is somewhat transparent visually. You know, one can see through it and around it, which is contrasted from the monopine, which is largely solid. And then third view, looking northbound on Jefferson, you can see the windmill and the lattice work off to the left in this view. It certainly, you know, takes on somewhat more the character of some of the overhead utilities and others in that factor. So this would be Atlantis Tower. One of the, you know, aspects of this is necessary is that there would be a monopole in the center. That would actually, would conceal the copious amounts of coaxial cable that are needed for these facilities and for each carrier. As I mentioned, it would be, you know, semi-transparent in that it is lattice work. However, the antennas that are mounted on the lattice itself, you know, would be visible, the panel antennas. The windmill itself, you know, would not be operational, and the way ahead has been presented here, attempted to make the windmill itself and the blades, you know, proportional to the height of the tower, which makes those blades, you know, rather large in diameter. The applicant's information, which was attached to your staff report this evening, as attachment four, the diameter of the blades is 14 feet, so it's not an insignificant dimension. I think that's one of the things on the other windmill that was done, where the windmill itself is actually relatively small, even though it's at the top of, I believe, a 90-foot lattice. That's the one at South River Road at the old treatment plant. Staff does not favor this design of the three. This would probably would be the least, design we would least favor at this location, even though it offers some advantages with the transparency, the rather large, non-functioning windmill at the top with that diameter to be in proportion, in staff's view, does not appear to be the best design option for this particular location. And that brings us to a third design, which is the water tank design. This was presented in some form to your commission at our last hearing, in some of the photo simulations. Once again, now we're at southbound approaching the South Linden and Jefferson intersection, and the water tank, which is on a lattice structure itself, is visible above the canopy at Tower Mart. And this water tank does have a hat on it. One of the design changes that made since then is remove the railing that was, went around the bottom of the tank that, you know, simulated a walkway around it. But again, in this particular design, and in seeing, and looking forward to the next slide, where we're back to Allen Avenue, does provide some transparency at the lattice, but then the tank is at the top. The tank dimensions itself, diameter is approximately 17 feet, and the tank, as described here, length, which I believe is actually, should be called height, if I'm not mistaken, in this design, is around 18 feet. So the tank in and of itself is not insignificant. One, a couple of the advantages that this particular design option, again, we'll look at the northbound Jefferson view, does provide, is that antennas for two of the carriers are actually within the tank itself, and then the other tank, I mean, excuse me, the other antennas would be on the legs of the structure. And then the other, the tank itself can, despite the fact that it has to allow the, you know, the antennas to receive the signals, it can actually be painted, so it does afford the option of providing some type of logo or mural or something of that effect on there. And so we see that as an option and an advantage for this particular design. We haven't presented those, any types of, you know, designs to go on the tank at this time, but that is something that we would pursue if the commission were to select the water tank design. As I mentioned, this would also have a monopole in the center, similar to the windmill. That's to conceal the coaxial cable that goes up. Antennas, some antennas would be located within the tank, others would be mounted on the legs. And in our estimation, this, you know, a tank of this nature is semi-agurian nature, and this is sort of the, this intersection and heading south is the gateway into more of the rural core of Southport and to the remaining agricultural operations further south. And at our last meeting, there was quite a bit of discussion about the different design options, and one of the notes that staff took down, which has stuck with us since that time, was this nature, this notion that the water tank had the opportunity to be iconic at this location. And we certainly believe that of three, this one presents the most, you know, likely candidate to be iconic, and iconic in a positive way. As we noted at the beginning of the presentation, in no matter which design option we choose, the commission chooses, you know, there's a high visibility, you know, associated with a given at this height and the surrounding, you know, built natural environment. And so, you know, we favor that if something would be, have this degree of visibility, that that structure be of a positive nature and notion and design option for this area. So hence, staff does favor the water tank design tonight and is recommending that the commission approves that particular design. However, tonight, we do have, obviously, we have our own, we have a list, if you will, of, you know, in which order we would, at staff level, we would favor the three designs. So in order to come to a decision this evening, which we're definitely seeking tonight, we are selecting this part of your discussion, we certainly can discuss the merits of each particular design option. If there appears to be one, perhaps one of the design options that, you know, there's consensus on the commission that is not a favorable design, it would be, certainly would be appropriate to put that design option aside and focus on the other two. However, if all three design options are in play tonight, we can consider that as well and move through and ultimately get to a preferred design by a majority of the commission. So with that, I'd be happy to close my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, David. Before we open up the public hearing, are there any questions specifically of David?
David, excuse me, on the water tank option, the possibility mentioned, excuse me, report that the water tank provides the opportunity for some type of public art, city logo, or other application to be painted on the tank. How would that, how would that be controlled? I mean, the tank is owned, would the city have rights to that with the tower owner?
Well, it's, we would, we would get a design from the applicant for that tank, and that will be part of its design and part of the building permit issuance. Tonight, we are recommending that that design ultimately be approved by the community development director, but it's not, it's not something that the city would necessarily have a license to, to put its, I think, you know, any of its official insignia on. One of the things we would want to look for to make sure here is that whatever design application was placed on there would not have a significant maintenance burden. We'd want to make sure that that design could go up and would not have to be repainted every year, for example. That's a maintenance burden and a cost, and we'd want that design to remain, you know, looking good as long as, as long as possible before it had to be repainted. And so we probably will be looking for a fairly simple, you know, design on there, something perhaps similar to some of the murals or logos that are at the town center, where they have the box of peaches or, you know, things of that nature, rather than, but it's certainly possible that, you know, a formal, you know, city logo of some sort could be on there. But again, we would want to try to keep in mind the maintenance burden, you know, for anything that's on there.
David, I just have one question. I am actually just curious about this. You removed the railing that was originally suggested with the tank. Just wanted to know what was the thought behind that?
Yeah, we, you know, we did, you know, kind of go around and round a little bit on that. Did thought that that certainly gave it a little more bulk than, and it already is, you know, relatively bulky. It could potentially obscure, you know, any opportunity to put some type of logo, you know, on there. But I don't think that the railing is necessarily 100% out of the question. It would something I'd like the applicant to provide some input on also regarding the thought to remove that railing.
Good point. Thank you. I actually just scribbled it over my drawing, and you're right, it would cover up any mural if we had, so decided to do that. Is the applicant wishing to speak tonight?
He certainly is available here to help answer questions. I don't believe he has a formal presentation.
All right. Jeremy, did you have a question of Mr. Tilly?
Yeah, I just, I don't know if we talked about it originally, but what is on the ground around this tower to secure it? And actually, Robert, Robert's comment about painting made me think of this. I was thinking of another kind of painting that sometimes happens.
Yeah, no, there is, yeah, the ground equipment is in, within a enclosure that's with a CMU wall, and so there's, there is a high degree of security at the base of the facility.
How tall is it? Is it climbable? I mean...
As I recall, it was either, it was six or, I have it on the plans, either six or eight. I don't recall exactly what the height was, but it was at least six. But that's common, they're all have that, you know, enclosure at the base, and there's a lot of equipment in there, and there's other security features that are built into that, that's valuable.
Sure.
Equipment. And perhaps, and the applicant perhaps could elaborate on, you know, what some of that extra security measures would be.
I was just thinking, I was thinking more along the lines of that a water tower might be, you know, more of a tempting target for youngsters to climb up and paint on.
That would be, I see where you're going, that would be a very bold, bold move by those youngsters, but I certainly understand where you're at, and I'm sure we can...
And being that it's on the edge of the property and the property next door, I think is still vacant, isn't it?
I believe the, I believe the Moose Lodge property is just next door, if I'm not mistaken, and then you have Tower Mart on the north side, but proper, those rural lots to the west are, definitely are still, are still vacant.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing, and if the applicant has a presentation, we could hear it, but if we have questions, then we can call you up at any time as well.
While I agree with David, all that purpose of how the windmill works, because the bulk of the antenna being on the outside is the number of carriers that will have, and the increased number of antennas, the pair that they use for their 14 feet, one of the things I could say is the windmill blade being 14 feet, that was just a design element that could be changed, if not, anything could set in stone. The CMU wall, we're going to do a full metal gate, a full gate, that's a little harder to climb, but it's still climbable, but what would stop them from getting up to the water tank is there will be a ladder that will be secured, so they would have to accept it somehow.
Thank you. They would have to work a little harder than just climbing straight up to the water tank, and it would be also a difficult climb down if they were ever caught in a very visible spot. So I wouldn't necessarily be all that worried about graffiti on the tank, although it could happen. I'd be more worried about graffiti on the CMU wall that will enclose it, and we can always go to, you know, a paint-grade CMU that would be something that could be repainted and/or washed, that's graffiti-proof. And that was really all I had. And I think if I had, you know, it's going to be a personal opinion on the tree or the tank. The only reason I wouldn't have selected the tank right away is it does put a bulk in the earth. That's why the railing was removed. When I went back and forth with that, I just decided to make it as streamlined as I could. And so it's whether you guys want to have something that everybody's going to see and know is up there, but you won't see the antennas, they'll be inside, or whether you allow the trees next door to grow a little bit higher and kind of blend the tree, and people driving by might not see it as much. It's just going to be a choice. There was one other thing I wanted to add. I can't, I can't remember it now, but I'm more than willing to answer any of your questions on the site.
Thank you. I'm going to leave the public hearing open just in case there are any questions. Are there any immediate questions? Otherwise, I have a...
I actually have one question. I think you just covered it. I was curious, other than the aesthetics, what the advantages of one design over the other was, but it doesn't sound like there are any. They both serve the same purpose.
They will.
Okay. I believe David had a good, thank you. I believe David had a good idea. If we could maybe work from least favorite to most favorite, and if there is a design option that everybody is not in favor of, we can get that off the table and not even discuss it much farther. It might help this evening go along a little bit quicker. This is not a vote, just suggested path to move us to a decision. Are there any comments of a particular design that we might wish to see no longer?
I would suggest, based on our prior hearings, discussions, that there was a desire to get away from the monopine, simply because it didn't have the relative lack of comparison to the other trees in the area, so it was clearly not quite the same. The other two options, I think, at least had, again, the iconic, but there's no other nearby windmill or water tower to measure their height against, so that they stand on their own, I think, and, you know, aren't, they're more, I think the context is better with either of those two. So I would suggest, the first one, I would suggest taking out of play would be the monopine.
I concur with what he says.
Okay. You have a preference? Wow, the only one I wanted to see go away was the windmill. And the only, the reason behind that was it honestly looks like a, an old-fashioned lattice tower with a windmill on the top. It's not functioning, I assume that means it's not going to twist. I don't think it can twist because there are panels up there, so it will be a permanent fixture, and it doesn't look like a windmill to me, I'm sorry. So that was the only one that I was just not in favor of. But if everybody else is wishing to get rid of the tree, I was actually neutral on that one. So I think we're down to two, and I'd be happy to entertain discussion about the windmill. So I think you already heard my comments on that one, though, so...
Okay, let's do the windmill. Let's do the windmill. I think that that would be my next choice to get rid of is the windmill. Concur, Robert?
I concur. Do you want to?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay, we're down to the tank.
We're done?
No, we're not done. Somebody of us have a dinner engagement tonight. Um, so, I, I do have some questions about the tank, and then, um, the, the selection of the tank raises a couple of additional details that the commission, uh, needs to provide comment on or direction for city staff, uh, such as the paint style, um, a little bit about styling and mural, uh, of any sort, so, yes.
That was what I forgot to bring up when we were, when I was up here last. Um, we can put pretty much, uh, what you want o- on it, it, it wouldn't be something that we'd be looking to change, but some of the thoughts, and we didn't, for the, um, photo simulations, we didn't want to presuppose what everybody would like, but some of the ideas we had were to paint, you know, City of West Sacramento on one side, and on the other side, put in something where you either had, like, the box of peaches or a vine, y- you know, with some, some grapes on it on one side. We would be doing it in a way that wet, like, even if you put City of West Sacramento on a, on a logo, uh, up there, that even if it faded, it would still look good for the, you know, the concept of a water tank. So, a- again, and, and the maintenance part was something that I brought up, I'd just be looking for something that everybody would recognize, uh, staying up there for a fairly decent period of time before I, I would be involved in repainting it, 'cause it would just eat up every reason to do the site. So it's really up to you.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chase?
Just a, you know, a comment on that, which, which I think was a good observation. I mean, when we look at some of the historic murals on older buildings, brick buildings in San Francisco and elsewhere, they faded over the last hundred and fifty years, and, and that doesn't take anything away from them, then, so I think even if these, it did fade, it probably could add a patina to it, so I wouldn't have a problem with that, and that would keep the maintenance down.
Well, my comment would be, of course, that it's supposed to be old anyway, so, I mean, if you're, if you're really, I don't know that you want me to tell you what to put there, I have grand ideas, but mine are probably all bad. So, you know, but I think you should make it so that it's, it looks like it's worn a little bit.
And he wouldn't know old, right?
And I'm old, so I mean...
Commissioner Moore, it's, it's your city, so I, I, I throw out any of the ideas...
That eliminates some of the nature of saying, gosh, we gotta repaint it to make it bright and shiny, where you make it old to begin with, and you don't have that issue.
Perfect, because that was my only concern, is somebody would then try and dictate how often I repainted it, and I, I agree with everything that you've said, where it gets worn and it adds character to the, to the concept of, of something that's been there for a substantial period of time.
Charlie, we're not putting your picture up there.
That's a good thing.
So, uh, actually, I, I liked your suggestion as well, it's what I was thinking, and I'm sure you'll discuss where those go, whether it's facing or, you know, coming into the city, you have City of West Sacramento, and exiting out into the rural area, you have the kind of the agricultural piece, which is really a gateway to our agricultural region.
And that's up to you, whether they spin around or, you know, which direction they face.
I think, um, is that something we could leave to staff?
Yes.
Uh, to make the decision on? Um, any comments? Okay. I, I actually agree, uh, completely with Charlie, um, as well as with Joe, we're not putting Charlie's pu- picture up there. Uh, I think a vintage-style paint, uh, would help capture the antique look that we might be going for, something that captures the, um, if we're trying to capture and, and the historical agricultural nature of, uh, of Southport, um, yeah, you know, make it look old, uh, and same with a patina look of, of the mural, and I'm happy with the staff.
Do you have any input on whether you'd want City of West Sacramento on one side or Southport on one side? Does eith- either of those make, I mean, I was thinking City of West Sacramento, but, you, you know...
I would think that too, since that's what we are.
Yep.
And it's, no, because I, I don't look at this, I don't look at this as having, I know Southport's the designation, but I look at it no matter what, whether you look at Broderick or Bright, they're really West Sacramento, that's why I meant by that.
I, I was actually thinking something like a, not a fruit basket, but a fruit crate, you know, s- other ideas that you had at Southport Town Center around that area where, where you captured the agricultural nature of the area.
Yeah, there's a lot of murals on there that are on the Nugget Building and others that we can probably draw some inspiration, you know, from something in that vein, um, that could go on there and, and could incorporate, you know, this, you know, either the city, you know, city logo in some way, shape or form, or at least, you know, the city name. I agree with Charlie that if it, at least for me, I would favor putting the, the city up there, not just Southport, um, you know, we are, we are one, we are one community here, um, but I, you know, I...
You could make it look like graffiti already, and then we eliminate Jeremy's problem, and we'll put, like, the River City Raiders up there or anything. I mean, I don't really care, and I really don't care what you put there, and I don't think we should make that choice tonight. I think we just told you that make a water tower, make it look nice, and people stand...
I, I don't, I agree, I don't think we should dictate it. I do think, um, it's interesting that the Clarksburg designation is right south of us, so I think, um, being a gateway to the wine country is something, as we grow as a city, that we could own and take on a little bit more. So I, I, I think that's an interesting location for us as well, so that the grapes you mentioned, that resonated with me.
So what might make sense would be the grapes on the north side of the tower, if you will, introducing you to, to the southern, and then again, coming up from the south, uh, welcome to whatever, the City of West Sacramento. Uh, just a thought on the, 'cause I like, I like that combination of, uh, information up there, uh, on the, the wording of the city, you know, of West Sacramento. I believe our, I mean, our current, uh, font type is, is a, uh, sans serif, I mean, fairly contemporary one. Would we want to consider something in an older font style on there to, to go on?
That, that would be my suggestion.
And I, I think I'd defer to staff to work with the applicant on that.
Thoughts?
Okay. I was, I was going to introduce you, but I was gonna say no more, no more agreeing with Charlie, 'cause I think he's gonna have a heart attack if one more person agrees with him.
Should be easy a lot all in one night.
Okay, with that, I'm, uh, it sounds like we have direction, and I would be looking for a motion.
I'll move the recommended action.
Moved by Commissioner Sandin.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Chase. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, uh, passes unanimously, thank you very much. And, uh, I need to close the public hearing on this and notify, actually, can you read the appeals?
Yes, I can. Um, accept is provided by, um, city ordinance, state statute or the law, any person agreed by the action of the planning commission, uh, may take an appeal to the city council by filing a notice of appeal with a city clerk within fifteen days of, of the date of the final action of the planning commission.
Thank you.
Appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I just ask a quick question of perhaps the applicant? I'm just curious if we have a time framework for when, when this might be, uh, under construction or...
Uh, great question. Um, I've already worked with my architect, uh, to do a new layout, 'cause the tank is obviously bigger at the bottom of the legs. So, um, we had just, uh, finished that. I, I will probably take, um, another couple of weeks just to, uh, start working on the construction drawings, get soils, um, a- assuming that what we just approved was an eighty-foot water tank, then what I'm doing is going to start working on my BP, you know, building permit package. I could probably have that into the city within two months. Um, building permit, I would imagine, takes about six or seven weeks, and then, so construction, so you're looking at roughly four, four months before I'd start construction, and then, even when I'm done, and, and construction of a water tank takes a little longer, so that, let's say it's a forty-five-day construction period, the carriers will start putting in their equipment right at the end of that forty-five days, and they'll probably take another forty-five days to get on air, uh, 'cause they have to fine-tune all their equipment. So, four months to construction and another three months before you have, uh, improved service.
Okay, thank you. Okay, informal discussion?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much.